Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 5:32 on February 4th, 2025. This is a meeting of the Sherburne School Committee, and we are holding this meeting at the middle school. First up, we have community comments. Are there... Is there anyone who would like to make a community comment? I don't see anyone online. Okay. Well, then we will jump right into superintendent comments, please.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My update will be brief, as we provided you with a lot of information last week. And, you know, as you continue to process everything you heard, if you have questions, feel free to reach out to Christine or myself at any point. Just to say that we are heavy into formative evaluation season. So for our educators in years one, two, or three of their tenures with us, their evaluators are meeting with them at the halfway point of the year to have them reflect on their work so far towards their goals and in the classroom, and provide them some feedback so that they can adjust practice and continue to grow from here through June. So very busy with that. And then Denny was going to give you a little update about the math curriculum presentations we've had for parents.
Yes, so we had a presentation at Pine Hill, and then this morning we had a presentation at Chickering. Our math coaches gave a little bit more insight into the curriculum. Specifically, I thought it was really good that they were talking about why the strategies that your students are bringing home might not look the same as the way you learned math, and why you don't necessarily go to the standard algorithms for multiplication and division right away, and kind of the rationale behind, like, why are we using the area model in order to do this? So I thought it was really, really informative. They did a fantastic job. We recorded it, and we're going to be sending it out to parents and caregivers via Parent Square, because there's a lot of really, really good information in it. They made some really interesting connections to the way that they're learning about math right now. For example, learning about the area model as a way to multiply, and how that is going to come back into play when they get to Algebra I. So I think it was interesting to hear them talk about not just elementary math, but the role, the thinking is going to play further down the line when they're thinking about eighth and ninth grade. So that was that. We had our...
Good question. Was it well attended in person?
It would have been nice to see more people there. We were kind of trying out the eight o'clock time to see how it was going to work for people, maybe catch people right after a drop-off. But I think maybe we have to look at some different times in the future.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of return to office, so it's much harder to... That flex is harder. I was not able to attend, but I'm thrilled that you're recording it, because I regretted not being able to go.
Yeah.
And then we had, yesterday and today, we had our TNTP. People coming in, and they are doing walkthroughs. So they represent the group that we got our math grant through DESI through... So they're partnering with DESI to see the execution of the math grant. So they did walkthroughs with our building principals and with our coaches. So it's helpful to have kind of an external set of eyes coming in, especially in a first year of implementation, just to notice thing and notice things and ask us questions that we might not see. I think the most valuable part was when you have a coach and a building leader both together getting to see a math lesson and then talk about it, and say, "Did you notice this? I picked up on this." So they were really good professional conversations that they had as a result of that.
I know we're only a couple, I don't know, handful of months into the school year, but how has feedback been from the teachers and executing the curriculum? Has it been... Obviously, I would imagine it's an adjustment, but what are you hearing?
I think we're in a much better place than we were at the beginning of the year. I mean, it's overwhelming to switch to a whole different curriculum. There are parts of it, like the math talks, that we're trying to emphasize more. I think that some of the challenges have come from teachers not knowing, like, what comes next. So they get to the lesson, they see this. Next year, they'll have the ability to say, like, "Oh, I know in three lessons that this is going to come up again." Or, "I know that if I just pre-teach this a little bit here, then it's going to make the next lesson better." So I think over time, it's going to become better. We're still getting used to the platform. One of the things we liked about Reveal was there's a lot of resources, and one of the things that's overwhelming about Reveal is that there's a lot of resources. So finding out where to actually go to find what you want, we're still trying to get used to that. And we, I mean, I always wished we had more time to give to teachers for planning. We have the early release days, but I wish we had more time built in where they could be talking and planning as grade-level teams. Tomorrow's early release, that's what they're going to be doing, is planning as grade-level teams. So we've been trying to kind of keep an ear to the ground to see what they need. Originally, we're going to do some kind of workshop-y things tomorrow, but we heard from the teachers, like, we just want to sit down as a group and talk and plan some stuff out. So that's what we decided to do.
That's great.
And I think the grant to add to that is going to allow more after the school year ends, some days that they can do that, that will be covered by the grant.
Oh, so the grant will pay the salary, the cost of the teachers being in there? Oh, that's fantastic.
And you have the grant in your packet tonight to approve.
Okay.
Cool. That's great.
Superintendent McCoy.
Thank you. Any other questions? Let's hand it over to Dawn for the financial reports, please.
Yes, and you have quite a few warrants to see that were approved since your last meeting, considering that we last met in November. Hard to believe, I feel like we've seen each other. And again, I thank Christine for signing, so thank you. Also, you have your monthly report, and remember, it's sort of a running report, and what's new is in bold, which actually, I forgot to add that to your report. So really, the changes that we've had since we last met in November, which is actually pretty good, is in out-of-district. And as you know, that's always a ever-changing sort of population for us, and there has been some additional placements that we're reflecting here. A new one has actually been added into the budgeting. So you'll see that the positive variance that we had in tuition's gone down, because we had to book that, and then tuition, I'm sorry, transportation costs have gone over just a little bit as well. So we're looking at a negative variance of about $70,000, but at this point, we have, obviously, with our payroll savings on the in-district, we are not in a situation where we'd have to go to the town and ask for additional appropriations. Keep in mind, too, this is a great example of why we like to keep sort of a safety balance in our circuit breaker. So we sort of talk about the budget. We never want to use 100% of our circuit breaker from year to year, because that does serve as our safety net, as our first avenue of looking for additional funds when unexpected placements do arise. Keep in mind, the town of Sherburne also has the SPED stabilization fund. That's the next level, and then the third level, obviously, would be asking for additional appropriations. And the town can decide if they want to dip into the stabilization fund or give us additional appropriations, but that's just a thought process as you see sort of the real year play out, the actual year, and then as you think about how we're budgeting. So if, in this particular situation, if we did not have sort of the salary savings that we had, we might be in a different position. So just sort of as you put all those thoughts into your head. There are still changes going on, so when I come to you in March, these numbers may look a little different, and as we start talking about the budget, you'll see that I did make a budget adjustment on tonight's version 2.0 that reflects additional out-of-district. So that's something that we'll keep our eye on, and we do our best to budget as much as we know in March. And so that's just where we'll be. We'll take our best guess in March, and then we'll see how it all plays out next year.
Dawn, when is the approval? It is March. When do we actually pass it?
Yes. So your next meeting will be your... If I have any more changes, we'll present that as version 3.0, and then we will open up your budget hearing. We'll do a formal presentation, then you'll make that vote in March, and then it goes on to the town for the next unvoting process. So you will be done with your... Your responsibilities will be finished with the budget at your next meeting.
And can you remind me, I know out-of-district evolves. Is it typically, obviously, no specifics requested, but is it typically an individual student's needs evolve, or moving into, somebody moving into the district, or no typical? It just depends?
No, no typical. You are protected for move-ins in most cases. If you have a student who moves in from another district and they're already in an out-of-district placement, the receiving district is not responsible initially.
Not for that year.
Right? Because for that year. And then if they move in after a certain, I think it's, they moved it, I think they might have moved it to March or April, then you're also not responsible for the whole next year. So they're trying to protect districts from move-ins, because you, if you get a move-in, you don't have, there's no, you haven't budgeted for it. So there are sort of regulations out there to protect districts, but if you have a student move in from out-of-state, you're it.
Got it.
And if you have a student move from a, and I tell you, I think we've seen everything this year. If you have a student move from an in-district program, that might be a special needs program, because the district is larger, and when they come here, we can't accommodate them, we're responsible.
Okay.
Because it came from an in-district move-in.
Got it.
So we have seen a lot of everything this year. We've got a new development in Dover. We've seen some activity, some movement in Sherburne. So I think we've seen almost every scenario that you can see. So our memories are, I mean, we're fresh up on all the...
All the different scenarios.
All the different scenarios.
Okay.
And so that, you do have some protection from move-ins if it's district to district, and they're already out-of-district. It's just the out-of-state and some of the other unusual cases that could come up. At the same time, though, we always have students that may be struggling in-district, and...
Their needs evolve.
Their needs have evolved, and we need to place them. So there is really no deadline for out-of-district placements. It happens 12 months out of the year.
Okay, noted.
Thus, you can see sort of how it's hard to...
Yeah.
Things happen over the summer. Things are happening now.
Yeah.
It's just one of those. And we're small, and so one or two placements do make a big difference versus a Wellesley district, for instance. They may have so many ins and flows, it may all just net because they have so much activity.
Okay.
So that's just something that, as a small town, both Dover and Sherburne, you know, sort of have to just be aware that that can happen. And I think both towns understand the dynamics.
Great.
And Dawn, are we at any of the class size limits almost, where during the school year we would potentially need to...
No, we're comfortably within the guidelines.
Okay, for every class?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we don't see any, well, when we talk about the budget, we don't see anything where we have any concerns one way or the other at this point.
Thank you.
So any questions on the monthly report? And then I just want to give you an update on the capital. So as you know, we had approved last year funds to install HVAC equipment that would include cooling in three of the areas at Pine Hill, the library, the cafeteria, and the auditorium. We've been working with the engineers to do the design specs, and with that, they send the design specs out to have a cost estimator to sort of, you know, do their best guess of what it would cost. It is actually coming in at higher than we thought with that, but you still don't know. I mean, it's a cost estimate. So until we go out to bid, we're still keeping our fingers crossed that the market may play in our favor. But in order for us to be able to move forward with any of the project, we are bidding it in such a way that we have a base bid, which is the library. Then they'll be bidding an alternate one, which will be the cafeteria, and an alternate three, that would be the auditorium. In this way, we'll have a contract that with the funding that we have, we'll be able to immediately enter into. Our hope is that we could get all three of them done, but if not, it doesn't stymie us from having to walk away. So if we didn't do the alternates that way, we put all three out there, and it came in at a number that we couldn't handle, we would not be able to do anything. And it's very similar to how we sort of dealt with the regions. You heard us talk about the seven rooftops. We did a base bid of where we thought we could be comfortable with what we had, and then we did the alternate. And then we were able to come up with the additional funds that we needed. So it's very similar. HVAC work is just one of those things that's not just us, it's happening everywhere. Until you go out to the marketplace, you don't know exactly how it's going to play out. So the bid is going to be advertised as of Thursday. It's a little bit of a longer bid period, because there's a sub-bid for the electrical. So you have to have a period of time, you have to have our site visit, the electrical bid has to come in, that has to be opened, and then the HVAC bid will come in. So in the middle of March, we'll be opening the bids. You could see us, that we call an emergency meeting, because there's some funding that maybe the school committee has access to, that we can sort of be able to pivot. And then we are in close contact with Jeremy Marsette, the town administrator at the town of Sherburne, and, you know, there might be something they can do, depending on how close we can get this to happen. So it's just one of those things we're going to have to wait and see. But definitely wanted to make you aware that the initial cost estimate, you know, exceeded by quite a bit what we thought, but we also think there are some things in the cost estimate that are overly priced. So that's what's giving us some comfort, and we'll just see what happens out there on the street. So we will definitely be close to your March meeting. I think it's not going to happen until, yeah, it's going to be two days after that. So we won't know, but at least we'll have some indication, because we'll see what interest we have from the site visit, and we'll at least be able to know where the electrical came in. And with that, we can look at the cost estimate.
Compared to the cost estimate.
And see where we stand. So there could definitely be a situation where we do post, you know, sort of a fast meeting for you guys in late March to see what we can, what we can make happen. And our fingers are still crossed, you that, that the timing for the delivery, these are smaller units, and we're told from the manufacturers that it should still, we'd be able to get them. So there's just a lot of things.
And our target is to hopefully do it all, but see what portions we can shoot, we can do this coming summer, so that there would be cooling options in the fall.
Okay. So keep in mind that our, our goal with this work was cooling strategies, right? If you go back to the report, there were concerns sort of about the operability of the auditorium, that is sort of a system that's been decommissioned. But in our mind, we can probably do some mechanical repairs if we need to for that unit. That, if by putting all of our money in that project, it doesn't get us the library, it doesn't get us the cafeteria, which is used much more during the day. So that was how we prioritized the way we structured the bid. And I put that in there, too, just in case you hear concerns about why we're not doing, why the auditorium wasn't first, because our bang for our buck for cooling is the library.
And you also get all the fourth-grade classrooms, the fifth-grade classrooms, and space for other kids to be in there and stuff.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
So we'll keep you updated, but I just wouldn't give you just sort of where we stand right now.
But regardless, if we are hot this spring, we do the same things we've been doing with the units, and hopefully not canceling school, but we'll see how it goes.
Exactly. Right.
Okay, great. Thank you for the update. Fingers crossed that prices go down.
I know. It's going to be...
The temperature is...
Nerve wracking.
And the temperature is cool.
To open those bids.
Thank you so much, Dawn. Anything else?
We'll go on to 26.
Excellent. Thank you.
So tonight, you do have version 2.0. There is not a lot of adjustments being brought forward. We do have one educator retirement that we are aware of, and so we are taking a salary reduction for that savings in that position, knowing that it's, you know, a very seasoned educator, who then we can replace with someone more in the mid. We usually look for an M3, M4 when we're looking at what our cost savings should be. That's the only thing that we currently have on your in-district budget. On the out-of-district, obviously, I've talked about your monthly appropriations, so you can see that we are showing an increase in tuition costs, but at the same time, given where we are right now, and knowing that we have some room in our budget to take on any other unexpected tuition cost, we are increasing the use of circuit breaker by $100,000. So by doing that, that reduces the amount that we have to ask the town for. So it gets a little confusing with all these numbers going in and out, but that is basically saying we'll be using $400,000 as circuit breaker. Your first version was built with $300,000. I will say, just a little over $300,000 without anything built in for transportation is what we're anticipating circuit breaker to be. So by going that extra 100, we're actually pulling from some of our reserves that we have this year. But that's why that's nice to have. At this point, we think it's reserves that we don't need, so we're going to apply it to next year's budget. So with that, we're basically, as you know, we said we built a pretty sound budget in version 1.0, so we're seeing just a $10,000 decrease overall, but that brings you down to, from a 2.43 to a 2.31.
And can you remind me, there's a date that provides incentives for people to communicate their retirement. What is that date?
Yes, we're past that.
We're past that?
Yeah. So February 1st is that date, and so that's why at the region, like, we're, tonight, we've got multiple of those.
Got it.
We've passed the date, and we can now take into consideration for the budget, the savings from those retirements.
And I know this past year, there were some late changes there.
Yes.
Obviously, we don't know, but is that unusual? Like, how often do the people decide beyond the timeline?
That was sort of unusual that we saw so many...
Right.
...last year. Now, keep in mind that if the staff of an educator hasn't been in the district for 15 years, that early retirement notice doesn't come into effect.
Okay.
So that's why you see some of these retirements happening afterwards, because there's no, there's no need for them to tell us before.
Got it.
And so that, some of that plays into that, but then, you know, life just changes sometimes.
Totally.
But no, I think that was an anomaly to see what we saw last year at Pine Hill. And some of that wasn't in retirements, was just people making changes and leaving here and there.
Okay.
So there won't be any other retirements. Well, we know, who knows? By March, I don't think so.
That we know of.
And if there are, then that just gets built into your next year's, as the post-budget savings.
Got it.
Which isn't, which isn't bad to have.
Right, it gives you an extra buffer.
As well, right?
Okay.
Exactly. And so we are obviously continuing to look at, you know, a few other things, but nothing of significance that we are aware of. At Pine Hill, I think the only thing, if we bring back any adjustments for version 3.0, will still be in the out-of-district realm.
Great. Nice job with 1.0.
Yeah, well, you know, we were fortunate to have so many things that already played into our favor, so that it gave us a much better base for version 1.0 than we had the year before, because I think that's when we came out with like a high number and caused some, you know, some concern in the town. So we are happy that this one came in, and I don't see it fluctuating much about, above this. And so we, you know, we were strategic about what we initially used for a circuit breaker. We wait and see how it's playing out, then we, it's typical for us to add more circuit breaker in later versions. And we can definitely take another closer look in another month and see where we are, and see if there's additional. You can only carry forward so much circuit breaker from year to year, so sometimes where we can assess that number, if we have additional, we've got to use it in the year.
Okay, great.
And so on the memo, too, you just have some of the other key dates. Christine will be joining us on February 12th to talk about your budget with Sherburne Advisory, and then the advisory's budget hearing is scheduled for Saturday, March 22nd. I think they're going to have us present school budgets, but I, we haven't given that definite yet, but we should probably plan on that. And what it would be is, we would take your open hearing budget presentation and probably even pull some of the detail out, make it more high-level, but I think it's probably good to be able to shed a little more light on the school budgets for purposes of those who attend the open hearing. And then the annual town meeting, where the budget would be finally approved, is April 29th. So key dates, just to mark in your calendar as we progress through the season.
We'll collaborate on all of that to get ready for this.
Thank you so much. That's it. Thank you so much, Dawn.
Thank you.
You too, so much. This is amazing. Okay, next up, we have action items, and I think first up is the approval of ACED. Beth, would you mind sharing something about that?
Sure. So in the back of the teacher's contract is what is called Appendix C, and that's where we list all of the stipends for anything from a department chair, to whoever advises the chess club, to the basketball coach. And so every year, we have a group, K-12 teachers and administrators that come together to review that and consider potential additions to that. Usually, what we do is we pilot any given club or program for a year or two to make sure that it's going to be sustainable and important to the community before we actually input it into the appendix. In this case, one of these stipends is for a mentor leader, and that mentor leader works with Denny to organize the whole mentoring program for all of our new Sherburne and Dover and the region staff, K-12. So anybody new to the district, whether they've taught before or not, is, receives a mentor their first year here, and they're not only able to access that mentor as needed, but there are monthly meetings held with this mentor leader and Denny to go over different topics, as they get to know the district and the expectations. For many, many, many years, there has been one mentor leader who organizes the entire K-12 program. Over time, we've learned that the needs of elementary educators are very different than the needs of secondary educators in regards to, you know, student support, classroom management, curriculum. So this year, we piloted having two mentor leaders, an elementary mentor leader and a secondary mentor leader. We are lucky in that they split the stipend, but proving the benefit of it, we'd like to give them each a full stipend, which is the equivalent of $1,600. So we're asking that we can add that elementary mentor leader to ACED. So tonight, we'd be asking for your approval for half of that, because you'll share that person with Chickering. So it'd be $800 addition. The good news is that would not go to your operating budget. It's paid for by the Title II grant, which is for teacher leadership and teacher mentoring. So that is what we're bringing to you tonight for consideration, and happy to answer any questions.
Are we using that money currently from the Title II grant for something else, and would we be sacrificing something else to fund this?
Nope. So Title II usually goes towards paying for the mentor leader, whether it's one or two, and the mentors for all of the new teachers. Obviously, the number of new teachers we have in the district varies from year to year. Generally speaking, we have enough Title II funding to cover all of it. If necessary, we do dip into the operating budget, but it's very rare.
And Dover did approve their hat.
No pressure.
Let me note it.
It seems like a fantastic program.
Yeah. So I might vote on that first, and then we begin to, okay, great. Can I please have a motion to approve paying $800 for half of the mentor leader at the elementary school level, as described by Beth McCoy?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca.
Meg, a second.
Thank you, Meg. And all in favor? The motion passes unanimously.
And the key thing, I think, is that you're approving the 1.0. That $1 is going to change every year in the contract. So you're approving the 1.0 to go into the Appendix C.
Excellent. And the dollar amount will fluctuate every year.
And that's every year, not every contract agreement?
Which is the three-year cycle, right? Her contract has an increase in each of the three years.
Got it. But you agree in the three-year process of...
Yeah.
Okay. It's coming back.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, everyone. And now, moving on to bullying prevention.
Sure. So when we were together with the other two committees last week, we gave you an update on the work we're doing around bullying prevention and intervention. And part of our work as a district is we have to review our plan every two years. So you had your first read last week. Based on some of the feedback that we got, Kate McCarthy, our Director of Student Services, made some changes to the reporting form to include a section specifically for the victim and another section specifically for the aggressor, to make sure that we're giving, you know, each individual or individuals the attention that they need and the support that they need. She also streamlined to make sure the barbedage around victim and aggressor were uniformed throughout. And I do just want to point out, one of the questions that came up last week was to make sure that we have a set of substantial supports specifically for the victim or the target. And I did go back and triple, quadruple check that on pages 14 to 15 of the plan, if you[1748.58] if you actually printed it out, um, it does list a number of supports that are in place, including the counseling that was mentioned, including, you know, changes of schedule, those sorts of things. So, um, I'm hopeful that the changes you see for Read 2 cover the questions and the concerns of the committee and that, um, perhaps you'll be ready to approve it this evening.
I think one clarifying question I had was, this is, as I understand it, a document for the school to fill out that families don't see.
Yes.
So is there also, as the parents of either party, partly on 14?
Mm-hmm.
Do they see that list or?
So, um-
I guess, does that question make sense? Otherwise, like-
Yep.
You guys know what the options are.
So on the website, which I'm sure you spend a lot of time on, um, is the bullying and prevention plan, which would have the list of supports and strategies that we use in the district. And there's also a link to report bullying, which, you know, you could report for your child or on behalf of someone else. Um, it's not as long as the report form that the administrators fill out on the other end, it's, it's really only a page, but that initiates the process.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful clarification, thank you. And it looks like they went with target as the language.
Mm-hmm. I believe so.
But that makes sense.
Target and aggressor versus, I think it was perpetrator versus victim.
Yeah.
But, um, I did notice that some of the, like, it still says parent of victim versus parent of target in some of the highlighted yellow. So I think there just might need to be a control find on victim and replacing it. This is on page 10 of the appendix portion.
Page 10.
It's like, yeah.
Okay.
But otherwise, I think, good.
I guess, is that an option to approve it pending final edits? Or do we need to come back?
No, we can approve it, um, and to your point, to continue to streamline one more time to make sure that we're using the same verbiage.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see. Findings and next steps in there. Page eight as well of the pages themselves.
Okay.
So you want to make, make the motion with that in there and then we'll share it with the other, we'll look up another one tonight.
We can mention it.
And then we can make the adjustment for-
Yep.
Perfect.
So I would appreciate a motion to approve the, um, policy as it is noting that there will be edits made and that another version will be created and shared with the school committees?
Is it just the one edit?
Um-
It's there a couple of times.
I know, but the, to, it's one edit to change it wherever it shows on.
Okay.
So wherever.
Yeah.
But it, we probably-
So we're changing aggressor to?
I think we're changing victim to target?
Correct.
Victim to target, okay.
Yeah. Although it's probably worth a triple check on aggressor or that, making sure that perpetrator has also gone to aggressor. I see victim in here seven times.
The target and, um, aggressor as the final terminology.
Correct. It was like perpetrator.
Okay.
Yeah, correct.
Um, so maybe could I have a motion to approve the policy as it stands, um, noting that we will be updating the verbiage of aggressor and victim?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca. May I have a second?
May I cut you off a second?
Thank you, Megga. All in favor? Uh, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like there are just six of them in here that are not explaining the change.
Right, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you for noting the cyberbullying portion of it as the world continues to move forward. Okay, for consent items, we have, uh, four consent items this evening. We have the approval of the November meeting minutes, we have the approval of the FY '26 preschool tuition rates, approval of the, of a grant, and approval of a gift. Dawn, would you like to share a little information about the grant and the gift?
Well, the grant actually is what, um, Denny was, spent a lot of time talking about.
So that's all said.
Yep. So that, and, and Chicaring, um, received the same grant.
Wonderful.
So we're equitable between the two districts and it's one of those that was sort of put out there and Denny took initiative to apply for it. So, uh, we're thankful to have gotten it. It's going to give us a stronger basis for implementation, so.
That's great.
Um, and as you can see, although it's an extra work for Denny and the staff, I think having that extra set of eyes, um, but know that Dussie is trying to move districts to this kind of curriculum, which is why they're throwing it out there, um, for just, and if you were a brand-new district who hadn't done anything yet, you might've gotten more money because they're really trying to move that along, um, in the process. Um, and the gift is, um, a, a staff member at Pine Hill applied for the Sherburne Business, um, business association. Yeah. And received, um, some funds to purchase additional, uh, books for the bookroom, reading room.
That's great, great.
So that is, again, anything that, uh, they will be issuing us a check, it'll go into your gift fund and then the educator can purchase against those funds. So anything that comes in from the outside, um, for our use is all approved by the school committee.
I feel like I should know this five years into Pine Hill, but is, what's the bookroom versus the library? Is the bookroom what the literacy coach pulls from?
And the educators, yeah. They're going to do a class read or, you know, book club read they pull in there.
That like fills their book boxes or whatever, the keys maybe?
Um, no, those are the classroom books. And then there's the library books that the students can check out. This is, you know, if, if, um, the third grade is all going to do a book read with these three options and you need 10 copies of each book.
Got it. It's a whole separate.
As well as some of the intervention materials that our, um, coaches use.
Very great. Cool.
That's wonderful. That's so exciting.
And we maximize space, it was actually a utility closet serving-
A book cubby. I was going to say, I've never seen said bookroom. But that's great.
The CSA closet. Any questions on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, then hearing none. Um, could I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca. Could I have a second, please?
May I cut you off a second?
Thank you, Megga. All in favor? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you all so much. I have to go see that book. And-
Maybe put some plants in it, it looks nice.
Excellent. Plants always light enough this space. Um, we have informational items within our packets this evening.